Good evening and welcome to the March 17, 2025, meeting of the Statesville City Council. If you're able, please rise for the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Oh, no clerk.
Reverend? Waiting on you, Reverend. Probably got Reverend Scott to...
Let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for everyone who's gathered here today. And please give the council members wisdom when they make decisions for our community. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Led allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. We have, we have taken items B and C off of the consent agenda and moved item D to the regular agenda. I think those are all the changes. Are there other changes by members of council? If not, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as revised?
So move.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Thank you. Behind tab five is our code of ethics and our front and center strategic plan. We encourage you to take a look at that. We try to abide by that in our daily activities as members, elected members of this council. I'm not aware of any presentations or recognitions tonight. This is a public comment period. Anyone, no one signed up? Okay. We'll move into the consent agenda. These are items that are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion. But as I said, if a council member wishes to have one of those removed, we'll put it on the regular agenda. Item A is to consider approving the March 3, 2025, pre-agenda minutes. Item E is to consider appropriating fund balance to approve budget amendment 20-25, 2025-19, I'm sorry. Item F is to consider passing a resolution directing the city clerk to investigate a petition of annexation AX 25-01, and that's Barkley Springs Phase Two. That's to receive the city clerk's certificate of sufficiency and to consider passing a resolution fixing the date of April 7, 2025, for a public hearing on that petition. And item G is to consider approving a resolution supporting an application to the local government commission for its approval of a financing agreement for the waterline spline project. Any items which need to be removed from the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve it?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. First thing on the regular agenda will be to consider selecting a parking layout to move forward with design and construction of an expansion to the civic center to serve increased demand. Mr. Hubert.
Good evening, council. This is a continuation of an item that was brought forth at the retreat. Essentially, there has been an understanding that the civic center is needing to expand their parking. Their current events sometimes overfill, and they want to have larger events that will take advantage of additional parking, as well as other events downtown in this area that could, could be used by the public for support of additional parking during, during those activities. So we brought three options that were previously brought forward in concept back in 2019. They range from maximizing the amount of parking to just a minimal amount of parking addition that still left room for additions of, to the civic center facility itself. And those went from only 73 spaces at a cost of $700,000 to up to 152 spaces at a cost of $1.4 million. And those are, those are just estimates at this time being a concept. And so during the retreat, there was discussion and a request to go back to the drawing board, so to speak, and modify one of the original high-yield parking designs to reduce, and if you see in the green area, that was originally going to be some additional parking. If we remove that parking from one of the concepts, that allows that space to be used for a facility expansion, and then the, the number of spaces added would be 106, and the cost would be about $1 million total. And those funds would be coming out of the civic center coffers for, for their fees that they, they bring in annually, and we have in reserve. So the question before you and now is, do we want to proceed with a, with a final design and get an estimate and bid documents together to, to make that expansion? And I think if there's not a time crunch on this project, then we can do this design in-house for minimal cost and then bring, bring back the, the ultimate expected anticipated cost before we bid it out.
What do you think would be the, if we did it in-house, what, what would, how much time do you need to present your proposal?
Probably a couple of months. Just right now, we've got a lot of things on the, on the front burner, but hopefully in the next couple of weeks, those will come off, and then we'll be able to, to focus on it on a day-to-day. But, you know, it, it's really not that much. It's just how many, how much time do we have specifically to, to focus on that without everything else that's going on right now?
And what, what do you anticipate if you, if we said go forward?
It would probably, if, if we bid this out, it would probably take a month to get designs back from, from a design, a professional design firm, and then we'd put those back through, through TRC in the process.
What, what questions or comments do you have?
Refresh my memory, we looked at two or three options. Do you have a specific recommendation as far as which one you would suggest?
Well, I think this one that we're looking at now does strike a, a better balance between trying to fit as many spaces in there as possible, but still getting some room to grow in the future for the facility. So in that respect, I think this does a good job. Some things that, that are not, not mentioned again today were, we're going to be taking down one of the, one of the dwellings, one of the structures that's on that parcel because it doesn't have a use and it, it's not going to be worth saving. There's also probably going to be a stormwater management facility, because if we, if we paid more than 20,000 square feet, we're required to put in treatment for, for the runoff across that, that new impervious area. So those would be other considerations to, to be aware of.
And again, so all, all we're doing tonight, we're not approving any kind of, we're just approving a design for the staff or outsiders to examine, and they would still have to put together a bid, bring it to us, and we could accept or reject the bid at that, at that time. But, but again, if we don't want to go forward, then there's no need having to, the staff's got plenty of other things they could work on, and we've got plenty of other things we could spend that bit of money on if we went outside. Steve?
I'm, I'm one of the folks that always says, for years, I said, you don't have a parking problem at the civic center, you got a walk-in problem. But I continue to go over the years, and the walk's getting longer, and I'm getting older.
I think, can we have, didn't Richard address the majority of us at the retreat about what the issues that he is facing at the civic center with parking? And maybe he could, I think Doris was the one who wanted to move this to the regular agenda. Would Richard be okay to talk about what your issues are there?
Sure. We only have a little bit, just a little bit north of 100 spaces in the main parking lot of the civic center now. We, the, the amount of parking at the civic center is the number one complaint we get there regularly. It is not uncommon at all to have events there that are 300 or 400, for 300 to 500 people in attendance, whether that's a, a day conference or a wedding. And, you know, when you're having these kind of events and people are coming to the facility, they expect to be able to park either onsite or as close to the site as possible. So I mean, we're going to need it at some point, whether it's a dire need right now, we're going to need it in another year or two years, it, it will become more of a dire need.
I agree.
I just think we're going to have to do it now, or we're going to have to do it later.
Well, we probably need to go ahead and move forward only because two or three years now, we'll pay twice as much, because it sounds like we're going, in the future, if it's going to be a, a good setting over there, we're going to have to have the parking.
Is that...
So I think we need to just go ahead and move forward, get some, get some plans on it.
We can still discuss it, but I'll take that as a motion to move forward with the alternative that Mr. Hubert...
Second.
There's a second. Further discussion on the motion? And I, you think it's okay for them to decide whether they've got the time to do it internally? Or do you want to, do you want to do it internally, or is it worth paying?
I'm happy to kind of have us start it out and, and see how comfortable things are going with, with the schedule and the, and the, and our capacity, and then decide if, if we hit a snag, to let you know.
Is that, is that okay? All right. Is there further discussion? Not with all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Appreciate your work to date, Mr. Hubert, and look forward to comes next.
Thank you.
Item nine, Matthew Pierce. This is to consider approving the amended service contract with the Downtown Statesville
Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you is the amended service contract with the Downtown Statesville Development Program. By way of refresher, Downtown Statesville Development Corporation, DSDC, is our partner nonprofit, and they have been for just about 40 years. They are the, they are the organization that does the work of economic development within the context of historic preservation here in downtown. We have been a Main Street USA program since, I believe, 83. We are one of the oldest in North Carolina. And DSDC has been our partner running that program for us that entire time. That is typically the, both the funding mechanism for that and our arrangement with them runs in a five-year cycle. The next one would be recycled at, in 2026, the next year. And that's important for why this is a one-year contract. You all had some specific requests to be made in amending the service agreement, so I've listed them here along with where they are in the contracts. So the first of these is to bring the two DSDC positions onto city staff. That was the conversation that originated all of this. In order to be able to better perform economic development within the downtown area, DSDC wanted to have a broader pool of staff, or broader pool of talent they could pull from. One way of doing that was getting better benefits for their employees. City would retain the MSD revenue, and as was mentioned in pre-agenda, the contract specifies that 100% of the MSD revenue remains with the city. There were a number of other things in there. Some of these were, these were requested by council. Some of them were ones that were incorporated into my original recommendations. So this next one, adding representative of the council to the DSDC Board of Directors, that's in section 4E. This is someone that you all would select, and if you approve this tonight, and if DSDC approves it on Wednesday, staff would pull together the requirements for that person so you all could nominate him or her. One of the concerns that was brought up was ensuring that DSDC would provided equal services and opportunities to serve throughout the MSD, and that's embodied in 3G. There are a couple of ways that we work to take care of this. One of them is that every year, DSDC in September comes to council and to the community at large with a report on their activities in the previous years. In that report, it's specified here that their attempts to provide opportunities for equal service and equal opportunities to serve throughout the MSD would need to be documented, right? The following month would include the plan of work. This is one of the program guardrails. One of the concerns that I heard from DSDC directors and city staff across North Carolina was this tendency of cities to sort of engulf the programs. And the autonomy of your down, of DSDC is important in part because they are an active board of directors. They provide a lot of volunteer support. So being able to maintain that, some level of differentiation, while also having a part, being part of the conversation as a city, is what's embodied in these next three sections. One is that the plan of work, council would be a part of that annual conversation each October to identify the two to three primary goals for the work of DSDC in the coming year. Number two, DSDC participates in the interviewing and selection of the executive director. We believe we settled on three participants from DSDC. And then finally, the Main Street, that each of the four committees within DSDC would have at least one staff member from the city on them, and they would be required to go through the Main Street program training. This would also be true for your representative from the council. And finally, 5B ties appropriations to the plan of work. Again, as Leah mentioned, she did not set a specific number here, but the contract does indicate that the city is at liberty to set that number and tie it, as they wish, to funds raised in the previous fiscal year by DSDC. I'll pause and ask if there are any questions on this part so far. So just by way, just so you all understand how the, the plan of work factors into this, because it shows up frequently in the document. Again, every October, the DSDC board, all its committee members and staff, along with city council, would gather together for a work session. Out of that, there would be two to three measurable goals generated each year. From December through May of that year, the committees develop and refine action items. So it may be, for example, and I've got this in the next slide, DSDC, along with council, decides they want to do something to improve parking downtown. Each of the committees is, is tasked with coming up with specific things they could do to improve the experience of parking downtown. December through May also includes the development of budget items for the following fiscal year. And then in June and September, the committee chairs update the plan of work, and then they report out in September on the previous year's work. Let me give you a, one example of a work through. Let's say in October, because I know chief has a request in the, in the budget for improved technology for parking downtown, right? So that'll provide a bunch of additional information. So let's say in October, through the plan of work development process, that everyone decided, we want to improve the overall parking experience downtown. That's a major goal, right? How would you measure it? Well, you could determine that by improved customer and business satisfaction with surveys. You'd have fewer repeat offenders, right? If enforcement is going appropriately. Once you've got those goals and you've determined that they're measurable, you then move into tasks and budgeting. So the design committee would identify a current signage and wayfinding downtown. They'd recommend updates on wayfinding. It's, it's one thing to have parking, it's another thing to be able to find it, right? The Economic Vitality Committee would work to create shared parking arrangements with local churches and businesses, for example, right? There's oftentimes a lot of parking that's only used Sunday morning or Wednesday nights, right? That might be fair game for business parking during the week. The Promotions Committee might look to get public input on what folks need, and then inform the public of any changes in parking availability. And finally, reporting and upgrading, in the annual report, they would go back to those measurables and say, this is what we were able to produce. If there was something additional that needed to come out of that, that might get included in the next plan of work, right? Maybe they want to continue that work on parking to the following year. And finally, they'd identify capital and operating requests to go into the upcoming budget, right? Tied to the work that they've done. That's roughly how the plan of work works, and again, this is something that you all would be invited to participate in. Any questions on this?
Good. Okay. Very good.
So that's everything I have for you all tonight. I'm happy to take any other questions.
Very good.
I want to say, I don't have a question. I'm going to say it again. I, I did not think that this was a good idea working them into the city. I think that if we spent half the time with the rest of our city with the economic vitality, retail activities, events, if we had a person that we could utilize that would do that for the entire city, it would benefit us a whole lot more. But that, that being said, I think we already brought this to a vote, and, you know, I'm, I'm excited that downtown is, that DSDC is going to continue, and I just wish we had that same kind of energy for our entire city.
Thank you. Other comments? Anybody prepared to make a motion regarding the approval of this amended service contract?
I'll offer that motion, Mr. Mayor. We approve this contract as presented by Mr. Pierce.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, will all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Pierce and all the others in the city, and Mr. Trey Robertson's here. Appreciate the help and participation with the DSDC. Next is to consider approving a fund that supports affordable and attainable housing that is funded by the sale of city-owned property. Council members Wasson and Pearson have suggested this. Do you...
So wanted to ask, frequently, the city has city-owned land that gets sold off. We want to create a fund, we want to establish a fund that basically sits there and allows those funds to be put into, not our general fund, that go directly into a fund for attainable and affordable housing, and to be used for those purposes later on. We absolutely would bring it to a vote when those things happen, but it would be an opportunity for us to be able to work with United Way, work with Stateful Housing Authority, and work with other nonprofit entities that are working on affordable housing. We want to also, you know, ask the staff to look into a policy, well, we would have to vote on that, and then ask the staff to come back and create a policy so that we have that in writing. And just across the board, if we have a property that we don't use, that sells for $20,000, that that money just goes into a separate fund as opposed to going into the general fund.
Let's, let's consider that a motion to create a fund from prospective sales of city-owned property and to ask the staff to present us a policy for how we might deploy those funds with the, which we have. Is there a second to that motion?
I second it.
All right. Now, it's open for discussion. What comments do members of the council have?
I think it's a, it's a good policy that we, I think it's a good policy, we've discussed it in the past, that we needed to create a, a policy for fair housing, and I think this is a start in the right direction. I appreciate you all initiating this motion, and I think, I look forward to seeing the staff's comments on a policy that defines it.
Thank you. Other comments?
I do. I, I think it's a, the concept and the idea is good. It's noble. But this land was bought with tax money from everybody in the city, and I kind of grapple a little bit with the idea that we're going to take everybody's money like that, and we're going to give it out to, let's say, a select group of people, in this case, people that are trying to obtain housing. The other ways to do this, and in my opinion, government, while it's important that it provides certain services, and we knock it out of the ballpark when it comes to providing utility services, housing and things like that tends to get bulky with me and inefficient. And I'm just not, I'm not comfortable, I like the idea, but I'm just not... And I'm just not, I'm not comfortable, I like the idea, but I'm just not comfortable. We've been shooting the money cannon at housing and obtainable housing since the Lyndon Johnson administration, which was before a lot of people in this room were even born. And we seem to just never knock that problem down. So I'm, I'm just not comfortable with the way this is handled this way. So I just want to make that known. At this point, I would be voting against.
Thank you.
I want to add to the statements that have already been made. For our society to grow, we have to have an advocate. We have to have some boundaries. And I think that it makes us, our city is showing growth and is showing character because we're looking out for people that are American citizens who may need help and assistance. And this is just one way, another avenue for them to have the resource they need to become what everybody wants to be, a homeowner or be able to provide for their family. So I'm grateful for this coming before council and I'm grateful that we are going to establish some documentation so that people can, and this will be in the future. And we have council will have something to work with and it's for the greater good of all people and I'm very grateful for this project.
Can I add one more comment? So to Mr. Hudson's point, I don't disagree with what you said. However, I think if we can have staff hone in, yes, I agree with you. It is all taxpayers' assets that's being sold. But if we look at the proceeds being used for a specific good to increase the tax base, that's a win for everybody. And I think, I think we can provide clarity in the policy that comes back from the staff. That addresses your concern.
Well, my comment is we don't have enough money now to even pay our bills because during the time we were working on this year's budget coming up, we talked about to complete the budget, we was needing to borrow about $15 million. And tonight, we already talked about the next fire departments couldn't easily have earned four or five million and we're going to borrow that money. We keep borrowing, borrowing. We, we just don't have the money to pay our bills now and to take land that we don't really need, if we sell it, it needs to go into the general fund. And I've always said you can't borrow yourself out of debt, you know? But anytime you start a program like this, well, you, we will run out of our land, but we'll have to keep that program going because I've been here 35 years and I don't know one program that we've dropped. And we just start them, we keep them. And that's the problem, the reason we don't have the money to pay our bills without the borrowing. So it will run out. So I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Other council members like to speak?
My long tenure in public life, I've always approached things from a business standpoint. If I were writing a business plan, if I was charged to grade someone who wrote a business plan like this, I couldn't give them a very high grade. It doesn't pass the two tests. It's not scalable. It's not sustainable. You have a limited number of assets. Knows when and ever those assets will be depleted. First of all, second of all, it again requires transfer payments. People who own something, people who paid taxes to acquire it and it gives to someone who didn't. And I just think we got too much of that going on everywhere. There's 13 federal housing programs that I can come up with. We spend $213 billion a year on housing. I think the state spends about quarter of a billion on housing. It looks like if the money was going to fix the housing problem, it would have been fixed a long time ago. But I don't think that we're going to do a whole lot in return on it. If we're going to fix up these houses and increase their value, that's a very poor return on investment. You'll spend thousands of dollars and you'll get very few dollars back in return for that investment. For those reasons, I oppose it.
So let me say this. I think we're going off the grid a little bit because I think everybody's kind of misunderstanding what we're trying to say. We gave United Way $190,000. So all we're saying is the same concept that we gave, the money that we did, that we really didn't have in the budget, that we still gave them, $190,000, Mr. Councilman, Mr. Johnson, then we're just saying that let's put this money somewhere where we can still give them that money, the money is already there. That's all we're saying. We're not saying about us revitalizing or rehabbing any houses. It's just when United Way comes to us, the housing authority comes to us, the money's already in the pot. And then you don't have to worry about, oh, we got to borrow this money from here and, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul. That's all we're saying. We're not asking for a whole lot of money because I'm on council too. I can read a budget. I know we don't have any money. Because a lot of things that we asked for, we can't get. We can't even get the tennis courts fixed correctly right now. So we already know this. All we're saying is just a little bit of money in a little bit of pot. That's all we're asking. But I understand everybody's concept, but please don't make it bigger than what it is. A little bit at a time. We're not talking about changing the world overnight. We can't. In this society, we can't even build a house right now. There is no housing fund. So that's all we're saying. But thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do want to go back in and say that we're literally creating a fund that will support homeownership, down payment assistance, or home repairs for people that already live in this community. And it absolutely will add back into the taxable value of those homes in our community. So to say that that is not important, it's important to probably 90% of the people that live in this city that we represent. And the same way we sit up here and we vote on a million dollar parking lot, we're not going to sit here and take in that same kind of consideration for maybe $20,000 that could go into a housing fund to repair somebody's roof. I think that we need to sincerely understand who we represent when we sit here. That's all I'm saying. So think about your constituents, not what you would want to do, but think about what your constituents need because I think we miss that a lot up here.
Thank you.
Can we be clear that Matthew, didn't we tell me, how many viable properties does the city have that this would affect?
Fewer than a dozen.
I think that with this being said and everybody listening, we grow and we have to make decisions. And I think this is another part of growth in our city, that we have something mandated that if we do have land, that it could be used in a different way for the greater good of the people that's in our city. Nobody's dictating, you don't know what the future holds. Nobody's actually go out here and build somebody a million dollar home. If we can get other resources, that's what we supposed to be about. Having the best resource for the people that's in the city of Stateful. And that's the people that are in need. And if we have a $20,000 building, we get $20,000 for a piece of land, we can take that and put that in the pot and let it grow. And then those that need it or the organizations, we're not doing it ourselves, we're giving it back to the organizations so they can do what they have been doing for years. Trying to take care of those who are in need.
Mayor, I think.
I mean, I'm just saying, with this being said, we can go around in circles, but the greater good, that we are not trying to establish a big, a big pot of gold. We're starting something to say, here is a future. We're doing something different. We're growing. And this is for the greater, for whoever is in need and how it can be done, how housing authority do it, how United Way do it, how Habitat does it. We just find a little bit more resource to maybe give back to help other people.
Mayor, I think in the pre-agenda and what was stated is we're trying to clarify a motion that is tasking the staff to write up a policy. That's all we're, I think that's all we're talking about. Is that correct?
That's it.
That is all we're talking about.
But in addition to, the motion is to, if and when we sell any city-owned properties, the.
Well, the motion, I think in clarity, we're asking for the staff to write up a policy.
That's all.
We added that, we added that, I mean, the request was to take money from prospective sales and put it in this fund to be used, as a number of people have said, to support these various opportunities to either repair, remodel, you know, construct homes and to ask the city to come back with a policy that would help us understand how we might deploy those funds in the future. So it's a twofold, it's a twofold.
So if we create a fund and it ends up with $60,000 in it from those 12 properties, say five years from now, we get two more properties. However that happens, the city is not on the line to do anything. We're not going to have United Way coming to us and saying, hey, we're coming to get that 190 again. Now, basically all I'm trying to do or what we're trying to do is establish something that will help existing homeowners and homeowners that want to live in our city down the road. Whether this council is here, whether who else is here down the road, that we come up with a policy that supports doing something inside of our city or at least having the fund there so that we can do these things. It is not taking money from anywhere. It is not, we haven't established any of that yet.
Yeah, there may be zero in the fund.
So there may be nothing in the fund. But the fund is there so that when we have a property, we can bring it to and say, hey guys, we want, we think this would be a great property to put into this fund. We get these little properties all the time. And all I'm saying is it's an opportunity. When we have so many opportunities that we will never all agree, but we do need to agree that we have $300,000 houses, $400,000 houses, $500,000 houses coming into this community and we absolutely have a lot of homes that are not being maintained by elderly people that cannot afford a roof, that cannot afford the things that they do to have their homes be sustained and they live in our city.
There's absolutely no way we cannot write a policy that meets one of our strategic initiatives.
Absolutely.
That's coming out. All we're doing is asking the staff to write it. That's what we're trying to achieve.
Okay. All right. I think everybody's had several opportunities to speak, so I'm going to ask to vote on the motion. The motion that has been made is to start a fund that would be supported by the sale of currently owned city properties and ask the staff to come back with a policy on how we might use those funds as they're accumulated. So all in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. All opposed? Vote for the motion. So the motion passes five to four. City managers report.
Have two things. One is real quick, the Service Awards luncheon is tomorrow at the Civic Center, 11:30. Y'all should have gotten an email on that. And then second, we are in, I believe it's our third week with the sinkhole at Trad and East Front. It's going to be a while on that. It's a traffic nightmare. We're trying to do the best we can with that. There's been cammering of all, all of the utilities, so basically all the pipes under the ground, water sewer and stormwater. And there's a lot going on. We're dealing with DOT amongst all of, you know, the departments that are involved. When we have an idea of timing and cost, I'll definitely let you know. But I do want to just kind of go on record of saying, you know, it's hard right down here in the middle of downtown. It's going to be that way for a while. It's just a substantial project. So just wanted to let you know.
Is the signage that's being put up now, is that our signage or is that DOT signage or a combination?
I think it's a combination of both. The better signage is DOT's signage. They're more accustomed to these bigger road closures, but we have our own out there as well.
I saw ours. I saw ours. It popped up. I was like, ooh, details.
All right. And I'll just say real quickly, each of you has a gift. We've been trying for a number of years, well, we're not been trying, we've been, we have been for a number of years, giving a gift to all of our board and commission members as a way to recognize their service. And so I'm not sure that every year that we gave something to the council, but we have in recent years, you ought to, you ought to at least enjoy the same thing that you're going to be thanked for, I hope, by some of our council members. And so thanks to April and Emily and whoever else had a role in doing that. It's a, it's a nice little flashlight that I took home earlier and in fairness, I couldn't get it to work quite yet, but.
My job. I appreciate it.
I thought you were talking about the ACFAR document that you all.
Oh, hell no.
That's a gift in itself, right?
Yeah.
We don't care about that. So thank you all.
You set flashlight to read that.
It's, yeah. Yeah, I'm, that's right. That's right. So there is a nice thing about this time of the year, we get to go home while it's still daylight. So thank you all for being here. Is there a motion that we adjourn? Motion second. All in favor?